Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? So far? Who are we missing?
I think we're all here. Is everyone here on your end?
Staff side?
Yes.
Okay, good news. Did anybody else have trouble with the link from the agenda? That is so weird. Good, I'm glad.
I dropped when I got your text. I was like, oh, no.
I swear, I pushed the, I pushed the link in the, but it may have been. I don't know. I'm not going to worry about it. We're all here.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, um, it's 4:01 PM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to order. Audience participation, do we have anyone that in the audience would like to make a statement on something that we're not discussing today?
Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, and sorry about the scare email, Scott.
Oh, yeah, I just saw that.
Oops, or text, I guess. Okay, next thing is the approval of the minutes from the April 24th meeting. No, what am I looking? I'm looking at the, printed the wrong agenda, no wonder. Sorry, May 12th meeting.
An emoji for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's me. I'm going to dig the right amendment or the right. The right one out. While we're doing, and while I'm looking around on my computer. Okay, that's, I just copied the wrong thing. Are there any additions, subtractions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing that, I entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye or raise a hand.
Aye.
Lee, welcome back.
Thank you, Karen. I'm abstaining from the vote because I missed your activities.
Were there, fair enough. Okay, um, next item I imagine that's on the agenda because I don't have it right in front of me yet is the discussion, further discussion on the comprehensive plan, middle housing updates. Is that correct? Then I will happily turn it over to Marcy or Scott or Leila or whoever wants to take the lead on it.
Hand it right over to Marcy. I think the commission received a memo last week and then we sent the updated, excuse me, the updated ordinance language this afternoon, which has been posted to the website too.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here again as we are hurtling toward the deadline here. We, we need to have things wrapped code. Amendments adoption ready by mid-June, so I appreciate all the time that you've been putting into work sessions and reviewing the material. And I'm going to present the information today in a using a presentation, so let me know if you can see this. And I'm, I'm going to go through the memo. Let me make it as big as I possibly can here. The memo that was sent out on Friday, I believe, and I'm going to use that as the basis for our conversation, but sprinkle in some old things and some new things along the way. So the goal of today's meeting is to using the memo as a framework to kind of go through things that we have discussed and I'm trying to get a read on what I believe we've agreed on. And then those issues that still need further direction. And so you can help me actually set the agenda here. As soon as we go through the memo together, we can go back and revise my reading because it may be that certain things I assumed we had reached some agreement on, maybe there's not as much agreement as it appears, so we will add more time into the agenda on certain items. But before we go through the memo, I think it would be good to do an overall kind of assessment of what this project is about and where we've come because we have been working on this for a whole year. And I want to make sure that people are aware there's been a lot of community engagement we've been able to take advantage of because it's been part of the comprehensive plan amendment. So we've had a number of meetings with that committee, the comprehensive plan committee. We had a housing preferences survey. We've conducted some interviews and stakeholder surveys and in October last year, we had an open house where the entire community who showed up, which was substantial number of people participated in an exercise to talk to us, to communicate their preferences about housing types. Where and how? And we are at least, maybe even we're on the seventh work session with the planning commission at this point. And the result of all that work is that we've been able to introduce a lot of local customization to this code. And we're still taking action, I hope, on 9504. That's what I, that will be our focus today and that's the focus of the adoption ready amendments. But there is also a land division ordinance and in talking to Leila today, we I want to let you know that that will be continuing into June and July. So that won't be so much a focus of ours today, but it will be a focus soon. And as a review of kind of how we have approached this project from the beginning was that yes, we have to make these amendments, we have to incorporate these housing types. But you made it quite clear, the planning commission and the community in the, especially in the community engagement event that there were some want to do housing types as well. So I've listed those here that have to do housing types are accessory dwelling units, duplexes or, and townhouses, triplexes and quadplexes and cottage clusters. But there was also an interest in having some additional housing types like narrow lot houses, which are really just smaller dwellings like a row house, but detached or like a cottage, but on its own lot. Courtyard apartments, which are similar to a cottage cluster, but attached to each other on their sides. Also apartment buildings, witty walk-ups. And I have an asterisk here because I want to talk to you about that. Also, small scale mixed use buildings, standalone cottages, as I mentioned, and cottage clusters, some maybe above and beyond what the state requires for those. So those were all things that we've kept, those want to do housing types or are types we've kept on the list and they appear in the code amendments. And I want to stress that we are providing, part of our customization is a more form-based approach. That's if you recall back in the time that we were talking about the concepts, the concept report. And we reviewed my understanding of the local context of Manzanita and the different kinds of neighborhood patterns that you have. I kind of cataloged those and then we have tied the zoning maps to those areas and they generally coincide with the allocation of, the mapping of current zones. So it was a rather neat process of just transferring middle housing, one, two, and three to your existing zone boundaries. But in doing so, we've also incorporated some differentiation between middle housing one, for example, and the other two zones. We have also introduced another form-based concept, which is the floor area ratio. Floor, it says floor area residential, but it should say floor area ratio and that's a concept that you only apply currently to commercial uses, but we decided to apply it to residential uses and I'll explain more about that later as a reminder of where we've been on that issue. We also introduced a maximum dwelling unit size for the first dwelling in, within that FAR Jell-O mold or balloon. And we also agreed there would be no maximum lot size. And it's been very clear from the beginning that all housing types should be permitted in every zone, even though that is not a requirement of the state, it's been the kind of ethic of this group to do so. And we consolidated five of your residential zones into three. So another little introductory thing I want to remind you of is that you, this customization isn't typical. Most cities resist this project and instead I think you have embraced it and made it your own and if you hadn't done that, or if, if you don't do that, you will actually get the state's model code which they've very nicely written for jurisdictions that don't want to kind of go do the work that you're doing to customize the code and write it in their own way. Those cities have it kind of imposed upon them through the model code. And I, I'm familiar enough with these provisions to know that you would not be happy with them, so the customization that we've done is actually really, really good. But it is an unusual degree of customization. So these are images from the model code. And we're going to be talking about townhouses later, so it's kind of just kind of a coincidence that I happened to pull some pages from the model code on townhouses here and they show things that I personally don't think are the best examples of townhouses, but that's what's in the model code. We, on the other hand, are taking a different path regarding townhouses and other things. Okay, so back to the agenda for today. As I mentioned, I formed the memo with my idea of where I thought we had agreement and where we needed more discussion. And as materials continue to evolve, because this is a quick process and we want to do a lot of interesting things. Materials involved evolved almost every week, so I do have more new information to share with you today. And I was, I am trying to settle on things we don't need to discuss and things that we want to review that are new. But I don't want to cut anyone out and I want to make sure that we go back and address things that people maybe didn't maybe you were absent from that meeting, or maybe you didn't fully understand the issue, and so I might have pushed the idea that we've agreed on these things. So the memo divides up kind of the main topic areas, the definitions. And then the basic provisions, mostly the mapping, mostly the consolidation of zones and the mapping. And then it has a section about the use zones or the, and those are mostly having to do with the development standards or the setbacks, the height. The new things that we introduced like floor area ratio and a minimum maximum size of the first unit, et cetera, those are embedded in this section three. And then my memo went through the supplemental provisions, which include parking and middle housing clearance objective standards. And it also, the memo also touched on the contents of the land division ordinance. So I had assumed that we might be able to move more to the supplemental provisions and talk about parking, which is always a really hot topic and I could show you more about the supplemental provisions that we have developed based on your feedback. But I, I understand that we may want to revisit any of these other previous ones through three items. So at this point, people can pipe up about that, or we can just go through the memo kind of high level and after that point, you can tell me if you'd prefer to revisit some things. Yes, Chair? Karen?
Thank you. I hope I'm not jumping in too soon, but I, I, I wasn't sure where we landed on the maximum building height. I thought we had left it at 28.5, I think, or 28, whatever our current. Is that correct?
That's my understanding is that we left it at 28.5 because we had a lot of discussion over the course of two, two work sessions about this. People were positive about upping it to 35 feet, especially given the experience that you just had approving the Pines project, I believe, and but we kind of measured the risks that would be associated with that, that if you raised it to 35 feet, the state rule for affordable housing could actually make you push it up a certain, a certain percentage above 35 feet the next time you get a project like the Pines project. So we decided that we would keep it at 28.5 and you know, and then work with future affordable housing projects for the inevitable of upping in height that might come.
Okay.
Is that kind of what you remember?
That's what I remember. I'm hoping everyone else also remembers that. And then I, the other question I had that I just wanted to make sure that we had settled was the maximum square footage of a dwelling with no additional units. Did we settle on 2,500 or was it 3,000? I know there was.
The maximum size of the first dwelling. It was 3,000 and I remember we had a discussion about there, there had been a proposal of 2,500. But we had a discussion about full-time families living in Manzanita and how 2,500 really wasn't adequate for that, so we increased it to 3,000.
Okay, thank, thank you. That, that clarifies. I didn't write those things, those two numbers down and I.
And thank you. I agree that it's been a little hard to keep up with the, the evolved evolution.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's, that's, that's my questions for now.
Okay, I see Brad and then Lee and then John.
Hi, Marcy. Um, thank you. I didn't see mentioned in the, or outlined in the agenda and you jumped to parking a moment ago and I actually want to go backwards for a moment. And I've got a couple of questions behind the question as well as an observation. How did we land on the 1,250 square feet for a lot size? That's question one, and then there's a couple more behind it.
Okay, I'll, I'll tackle question one. So it was a site size that had been, a lot size that had been discussed. And I remember, I think it was in a packet a few work sessions ago. And I don't feel that we ever actually settled on a number. But we are at a number now and that's partly I apologize because I, I only recently realized that in order to comply with the townhouse standards, we're going to have to increase, we're going to have to adopt a lot size that allows townhouses to be two times their sorry, minimum density be two times the base zone density. That's actually a standard requirement that's in the Oregon revised statute and the large city middle model code. So I believe I might have a slide that actually I think what we should do is hold that it was one of the issues that I, I knew we would go back and discuss when we're talking about the use zone. So I'd prepared some slides that will take us through some of the math.
Okay, hold, hold on that for a moment if you could. What, why? And I've reviewed OAR 660 dash 046 and why is it mandatory? um, why is it mandatory? I'm still not clear, and I, and maybe others aren't as well, why you're stating it's, it's considered mandatory now, because it was never positioned mandatory before that I know of, but why is it mandatory now?
Because townhouses are required on all lots that currently permit a single family dwelling. And townhouses are by definition, a uh, have to be attached on their sides. And they're on their own lots.
I, I get that. I still don't understand why it's mandatory. Can you unpack that a little further?
Because the hmm, density requirement. Um, if a city, if a large city applies a density maximum, I'm sorry, the better one is from the large city model code. It says in, in, and this is, this is a um, citation that I selected just for Manzanita, because you, let's just review your base zone requirements for a second. Your um, R one, two. Uh, and actually, all the residential zones right now, they allow a dwelling for every two, twenty five hundred square feet. So you have a slightly unusual situation in that you allow duplexes pretty much everywhere if you have a five thousand square foot lot. Is that everyone?
Let me ask a question slightly differently, because I'm still not following. Why did we, did we deliberately elect to go to Division forty six middle housing and claim a large city status over ten thousand?
That is with a measure, the Tillamook County measure that your Senate Bill four forty six, I think, um, that get all these numbers are getting muddled in my head. But that's the one that allows, that requires all counties and cities in Tillamook County to comply with the large city model code.
And we could not have opted out of that particular portion.
You could opt out of the entire thing by going through a really complicated um, mo- most cities, large cities that have lots of staff have never went through this, but you, you, there is an opt out. And it requires you to analyze all of the housing production statistics for every uh, zone of your city and come up with an alternative plan for accommodating middle housing. That would not really be in line with where we had, where we started on this project and where the direction that I was given.
I don't see the, what, what you, when you gave me the six sixty dash zero four six, you know, I'm, I'm trying to understand the twenty five hundred square feet um, that's, that's noted there. And I mean, maybe it's going to take a land use attorney to unpack all of this information, but it's, it's not, I'm still not clear.
So here, here are the two, yeah, here are the two citations, and when we do this for cities, where we interpolate between the six sixty oh two two zero and the large city model code. The large city model code is kind of a clunkier tool. It's, as I mentioned, just in the introduction, it's intended for cities that don't want to do more sophisticated analysis of their context and everything. And so its rules are a little bit um, more cut and dried. If you have, if you allow um, in zones in which the minimum lot size for detached single dwellings is twenty five hundred square feet, townhouse products are allowed two times the allowed density. That would mean that they're half of twenty five hundred. Now, this um, the, sometimes a little bit more.
So it's allowed, though. It doesn't mean that it's mandatory is, is how I'm reading it, though.
No, but you have to, you have to allow it. So that means you have to have the minimum lot size available. Now, somebody doesn't have to build it. True.
Well, I, I, my, my concern is, and then I'll move on, so everyone else has a chance as well. But while it might serve the best of intentions, I think it's, you know, possibly have unintended consequences, number one. And I haven't even gotten to the parking issue that's going to be a result of it that pushes it out to the street as, as, as I understand it. But I just, you know, and, and I'll claim mea culpa here, but I don't recall the PC having a robust conversation on, on this topic. And you know, I, I, again, I think the, it's going to have unintended consequences um, relative to the community. And I, I think it requires some serious, serious conversation, whether it's in addition to today or it's, it's a big part of today. But I think the lot size and the resulting parking and where we're going is counter to the character of the city and the community. And, and I'll move on for a moment, because I know there's other people with their hands up. But I, I'm really um, concerned about this particular piece of this ordinance.
Okay. Did you, Brad, did you say you had a couple of other issues?
Well, I, I think I wrote, I kind of packed in the, the comment regarding the uh, the, the, the parking and, and so on without going into detail. And I'd maybe prefer to wait instead of um, again, dominate the, the, this conversation, because I'm, I'm sure uh, my colleagues have questions on this same topic.
Okay.
So I, I'm gonna um, put my hand down and mute and let others uh, join in for a moment.
All right. Great. Thanks. So Lee, do you want to speak next?
Yeah, Marcy, thank you. Um, first off, what, I want to be clear, I'm prepared to be educated. Okay? Part of it might be, might be my naivete, part of it might be missing a meeting. I, I agree wholeheartedly with the new zoning designations and uh, meeting the middle, middle housing standards. That all makes sense to me, but I'm confused by some of the new or modified uh, development standards that were put out recently uh, for our review today. Um, I don't, I don't recall voting on any of these things. It seems like there was an inference that there was support for a particular issue, and then it became what we agreed on. And I, by a lack of vote, I don't know that I agreed on anything, quite honestly. Um, I guess the fact that I didn't dissent uh, on any given topic means that I was okay with it. Um, I, I'm struggling with the lot size that Brad just mentioned. Um, I don't know that we ever really came to any conclusion on that. And your, your uh, uh, attempt recently to um, to make a more clear understanding of that kind of still leaves me a bit befuddled, to be honest. Um, I'm not saying you're wrong, certainly. Again, I'm prepared to be educated. Um, one of the other things was the building height. Uh, I'm happy it's at twenty eight and a half, quite frankly, but last I recall, when we left it, we were, there was a debate about thirty five, and I was opposed to that. But the group seemed to be in agreement that there was possibility for some consideration of some greater height than twenty eight and a half. Again, not having a vote or not having a more specific conversation about do you agree or disagree, uh, makes it kind of hard to move forward with some of these things. Um, I, I guess overall, I'm just, just a little confused on the process. And so I would, uh, I would appreciate any, any direction or input from you or others that would enlighten me. Oh, I know. There's one other thing I wanted to mention. Um, yet it sounds like we're going to postpone the parking decisions for another time for future meetings. Is that correct?
We're postponing the land division ordinance.
Okay. So we're going to make a decision about parking today? Is that, is that right?
Mm-hmm. There's. So maybe I can answer that question and also start to describe the process that we're in. Um, I have, first of all, we're on a very fast timeframe to get this adopted. And I have, because we're on a grant-funded project that has a deadline. And I usually work with planning commissions to reach um, some sort of agreement. It can't, it's almost impossible to reach consensus. And I've never had a um, a planning commission vote on their own feelings about a project. Um, we try to work through issues and address them and come to a um, something that most people can support. And so I've, it's been very difficult for me being at the end of a Zoom. Um, but we have had at least four work sessions on the amendments themselves. And I have tried to say like, what I'm hearing is, what I seem to see is, can people nod if they think this is a, this is something they can support? Um, that I've tried to kind of get you to give me through Zoom body language, which, you know, just you gotta um, admit that it's not the best, right? So, but then I try to come back with, okay, based on what I heard, this is a refinement of that concept. And that's kind of the best that we can do. Um, and then the public process is that the public gets to weigh in. It's your job to make, uh, to come to, it's our job, yours and mine, to come to an agreement that you can support an amendment package that you can support that then goes to the public. Then there will be other opportunities for the public. Your job is to recommend a package in the end of all of that to the city council to adopt. That's my understanding of the process. And, and also, the last thing I'll say is that a lot of things that we're doing are not up for a debate. That's, there's subtle things that we can do to make them more customized for Manzanita, but a lot of what we're doing is required. And I've tried to be also really trans-clear about that.
Yeah, I think I understand the difference between the required language from the state and the things that we wanted to do and have been pursuing. I think I understand that difference. But uh, thank you for, thank you for the input regarding no vote. Um, I didn't necessarily expect it, but at the same time, I just feel like there were some provisions that I thought we were going to discuss them next time, you know? I didn't think we had made a final decision. And when it's put in writing in a manner that, um, you know, this is, this is, I interpret some of what was written as this is the way it is now. And I don't know that I necessarily agree with it. So I'll leave it at that. And I know John is anxious to share his, his questions, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. John?
Yeah. Um, to, to sort of address what Lee just, it wasn't intended to do this, but there, there are things that we have gone through uh, over the last, oh, half dozen PC meetings that we've, as a group, I think, agreed to, that I don't necessarily agree with. Um, and that's probably not going to change, but I'm probably, you, you know, I think we've had this before. It's like, you swallow some of that stuff because the document overall is turning out, I think, to be very good. Uh, like I said, even though there are pieces that I don't agree with. Um, that's sort of an aside and just sort of follows Lee uh, a bit. I, I had a couple of technical questions about, um, let me start with the Woody walk-up. This is uh, and I don't know that that was one of the state mandated uh, housing types. And I think we may have just sort of all agreed, yeah, that sounds great. Um, but I'm, but I think what it comes down to is that's going to be almost specifically for middle housing or uh, low uh, cost housing that we get the state mandated increase of a story, if I understand that correctly. Um, because I don't think you can shoehorn a three-story house or in, in twenty eight and a half feet. Um, maybe you can, but not if you're tall. Um, that's one question. Second question was, I believe townhouses or row houses are a state mandated housing type. Is that correct, Marcy?
Yes, that's correct.
How do we justify our side yard setbacks and still agree to townhomes? It's similar to the Woody walk-up thing, but there seems to be a uh, you know, a uh, inconsistency there. Um, and then I, I think I'll talk about parking when we, when it comes up later in the discussion. That was the last part about what I wanted to talk about. But anyway, if you, if you could sort of tell me how the townhouse thing works and the.
So um, I'll, I'll also address the Woody walk-ups. And I, I think overall, um, know that we've put into place a lot of development standards. Um, that is height, the shaping, the daylight, side yard daylight plane. We kept the height at a cer- at the existing height. We continued to have side yards and front yards, et cetera. Those are all, those may make some of these housing types very difficult to build. Um, and, and then you add parking in too. And the fact that we're actually not looking at on-street parking any longer. So I don't know if people got that, but we're not looking at, at uh, allowing on-street parking to count anymore. Um, because it requires too much working with public works and other things. Your streets really don't even have a definition of an edge. It's not clear where the right of way is. We've talked about this, and it didn't seem to me that we could reach an agreement about on-street parking. So in interest of just getting us an adoption-ready version of your code amendments, uh, I pushed that off. You can address that during your comprehensive plan uh, um, implementation phase. Um, so all parking has to be on-site. I mean, so if you think about, okay, you've got the setback, you've got the daylight plane that we worked out, you've got, um, we have a floor area ratio, which is actually going to slightly limit what somebody can build on a site from what you can build today. And then you have to provide all your parking on-site. You're probably not going to get that Woody walk-up, maybe except in the middle housing three zone, you know? It's, it's a self-limiting, all of these things are very form-based and somewhat self-limiting. But we're also saying that, hey, you know, if you want to do the units under five hundred square feet that don't require parking, maybe you can find a way to do aplex. Maybe you could find a way to do a multi-unit apartment building. We're trying to allow really um, innovative things that provide a wide range of housing choices that you don't have right now. So um, I wanted, I'm trying to reassure that it's not like everything goes. We've put a lot of form-based safeguards in place. On the other hand, we've not made it impossible to do something very affordable or, or provide a wide range of housing choices we've made, but it's going to take someone who's kind of smart to do that. So that's how I would talk, that's how I address the Woody walk-ups. It, it, it's obviously you're really not going to be able to build a three-story building unless you have a big, flat area in the middle of your lot, and you don't have to meet the side yard setback. So it's only going to be on larger lots. You could build a two-story, right? We are still going to allow multi-unit apartment buildings everywhere, but they'll have to be under the, under the height limit. And then townhouses, we've limited them to two in the MH one zone and to four attached in the MH two and three zone. And that, that means that if you have a one thousand two, if you have a twenty five hundred uh, square foot lot divided into two, you'll get, you could get two townhouses attached to each other in the shape of what's probably very similar to an existing dwelling in Manzanita today. But it's going to have a lot line running down the middle. It's actually going to be two separate units. So you get homeownership and you get small units. It's a kind of a, personally, I think it's a really smart way to try to get more homeownership, smaller housing.
I, I agree with that, Marcy, but I just don't understand the legality of having a five-foot side yard setback with a lot line running right between, you know, with two attached units. But it's, it's a technicality, and Tom probably knows the answer, but I don't.
But they're, but they all have to meet the. But they all have to meet the side setback where they're not attached. Is, they'll have to meet the side yard.
Given, then I'll, you know, I can, I can wrap my head around that and move on. One other thing, in your write-up, um, your, your early synopsis, you said maintain our five-yard, uh, rear setback. I believe our rear setback is 10 feet currently, except in a few locations, but that's a net, but.
Yeah, thank you. I, I realized that when I was going through the track change code amendments.
Okay.
We're not changing it to five. All right, thanks, John.
Didn't think we were, so.
Bert, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Uh, you know, right now, uh, with our 5,000 square foot lots, with the side yard setbacks, you can build a 5,400 square foot house, which isn't middle housing. So we've got to do something to, uh, uh, change the code a bit to try to sort it out. And townhouses are very common. I mean, that's one of the most common kinds of housing being built today, actually, in, in most, uh, towns and cities. And, uh, zero lot line townhomes are how people can afford to get a mortgage and afford to start on the ownership path. So I'm fairly strongly supportive of, uh, figuring out how we make sure that we can do townhomes. And, uh, you know, on the duplex, currently the zoning would be kind of, uh, like 2,500 square foot lots. So the logical progression to me within Manzanita would be 1,250 square feet for a townhouse lot. And it may not be a regular shaped lot, and there may be easements and all sorts of other things that creative, uh, developer and architect can come up with. But I, I think that's a reasonable size. It could be smaller. Uh, but since the pattern in the city is 5,000 square feet, I, I, I support the 1,250 square foot size. And, uh, you know, that can be changed in the future. But if we're going to encourage homeownership, the lots have to be smaller. And we need to have those zero lot line homes. It's a really important part of, uh, providing people the opportunity on the, uh, homeownership path. And, uh, the height stuff, I think 28 to and a half is, is good. Uh, you know, if it's a hundred percent affordable project, then, you know, they can get the extra height. Uh, so that's kind of a automatic from the state. So I think overall, it's a really fine effort. And, uh, you know, it, it doesn't have to be the last effort, right? So, but we, we've got the, uh, this deadline coming down and we need to make sure that we, uh, meet that. So anyway, I think, I think it's a, a fine effort.
Thanks, Bert. All right. So I see Frank and then Brad.
Yes, thank you, Marcy. I just wanted to comment on the process that got us here today. You know, many, many months ago that we started down this path and we had this enormous amount of information and new ideas and all of these things and all kinds of crazy input from everybody. And at no point in any of these discussions were there ever intentions to vote on anything. It was all discuss, discuss, massage, let's, let's form and, and, and keep talking about it to get us where we are today. We're, you're, uh, comprehensive little boxes of what we've discussed, what we've kind of decided was okay, we can move on from there. Because if all of us needed to have votes, we're all derelict of our duty because, but that was not the intention. So I think you did a really good job of taking all that information and getting us to where we are today. And then those formal votes will come. You know, Lee, I know you were concerned a little bit about, you know, we didn't vote for any of this. We certainly discussed the heck out of all of it, uh, and are continuing to do that. But we'll all have an opportunity to vote specifically on these things. And if there are main objections that need to hold something up, that will happen before any votes. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Frank. Brad?
A little bit of a response to what I'm hearing. So I just want to make sure when, when I expressed, um, my comments, I'm not suggesting that we don't do townhomes by any means. My concern is taking a 5,000 square foot lot and basically being able to put four, you know, basically four homes, four side by side by side. And the densification or the density that that creates on any particular street, especially if you start doing multiples of those. I was unaware of the parking no longer being proposed to going partly on the street. It sounds like that was a change that occurred today, uh, or in the last few hours. But I just want to be clear, my concern is about packing essentially four homeowners on a, call it a 5,000 square foot lot. I don't have issues with townhomes. I don't have issues or a concern if a townhome is 1,250 square feet, have an issue that we start doing a division of, of 1,250 square foot lots to, uh, to put a, an 800 square foot townhome on it. And, and what stress that puts on a particular community or neighborhood if you get multiples.
So on the parking, I'm, I, I tried to explain in the memo that went out on Friday that, uh, we had, I had pulled, yeah, this was one of my decisions to pull the parking on-street issue from this package. And I'll explain more about what we have instead, because I think what we have instead is actually really workable, which is that we would allow a parallel parking space on-site through a set of specific standards that we've written into 4.160. But I would also like to clarify that, um, townhomes, once again, what we decided on many months ago was that we would kind of keep the smaller version of cert, all housing types are allowed everywhere. I think that's been, as I mentioned, an ethic. So that would mean townhouses are allowed everywhere. But they're smaller in, uh, MH1 and a bit larger or a bit maybe more numerous in MH2 and 3. So that means only two can be attached in MH1. But up to four can be attached in MH2 and 3.
Marcy, in the May 30th memo though, and maybe I'm misreading it, but under, it shows on page five, on-street parking options, permit, permit required, permit, allow required, allow parking space to be located on-street instead of on-site. Am I misreading or misinterpreting?
In the cover memo?
The cover memo for May that was received on, on May 30th, on page five, it says on-street parking options. And maybe I'm connecting dots that aren't intended to be connected with this whole, call it townhouse, townhouse conversation, but says, you know, required parking spaces to be lo- permit required parking spaces to be located on-street instead of on-site.
Yeah, here, let me just jump to, because it's in the little box. So, um, in the section that deals with parking, I wrote, on-site parking, that we had these different standards that were going to be in the package. And that we had discussed, this is to communicate that we had discussed on-street parking options. But I ha- I wrote here, recommendation, because on-street parking options are not mandatory for state middle housing compliance and they involve improvements to street right-of-way public works and street standards, discuss, so I've not made a decision about this, but this is the discussion I'd like to have with you, discuss postponing this action to comprehensive plan implementation phase. I think it's got a lot of things bundled up inside of it that we probably aren't going to be able to resolve in the time.
If you push it downstream to the comp plan and we accept the, the premise that you could put four townhomes in middle housing one or what have you, on a, on say a 5,000 square foot lot, and we e- accept that, but then we kick the parking downstream. What happens if you default back, you know, I mean, we're, 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 I think the two are connected is what I'm trying to say. And that's what I think was my opening comment, you know, 20 minutes ago, that I don't know if you can separate one from the other.
No, I think we can. I mean, we have to do the things we have to do by the middle of June. But things that are more complicated because they involve multiple departments and, uh, public work standards and street standards, th- these are probably a little bit more than we can bite off and, and finish before the middle of June. And it's not required by the state. And I don't think that these two are dependent on each other. There's still quite a lot of parking standards, how townhouses get parked uh, within the townhouse standards that are in 4.160. There's actually a lot of language about controlling the way that parking in townhouses, where it is placed, making sure that we don't have snout house townhouses and driveways every eight feet, but to preserve, um, street space.
Marcy, what would be the outcome if we delayed the 1250 conversation? And I know it's probably a little bit bigger than just the 1250. Is it possible in this process, when you talk about, you know, mid-June date and so on, can it be selective where a couple of things, just like the parking is moved to the comp plan? Are we allowed? Are we able rather to move, say, the, the, the whole conversation about townhomes and, and how they get divided up on a particular lot? Can that conversation and decision rather be postponed?
I don't know. I know we have to adopt that, we have to adopt that townhomes can be, are permitted on every lot that currently today allows a single dwelling. And we have to meet a uh, minimum density standard. That is a must-do. So I don't know how we could get out of that. But there are, I mean, I'm open to other suggestions that, you know, but, I see the chair of the planning commission has her hand up and I would love to hear your thoughts on this.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just going to skip ahead of you, Tom, but we won't forget you. I think the way this would work if we delay the, um, requirement for on-street parking, if we, um, and I, this is just my thinking on it, that part of the comprehensive plan might include language that says we would like to work toward better on-street parking as streets are upgraded, you know, as they get, um, refinished, that we, you know, d- define the streets better for where they, you know, where they begin and end on each, on each side. And then as that work gets done throughout the city, over the next 10 to 20 years, whatever our, um, sunset is on these ideas, that those things would then become implemented as the city's public works plan allows it. So that for now, well, I think what Marcy is recommending is that we say that all parking, required parking needs to be off-street. So that anything that get, gets built now in the MH1 zone would be two attached townhouses with two off-street parking spaces. In the M2 and M3 zones, it could be four attached townhouses with four off-street parking spaces. And, and I think that's how that would work. And then later, as a street gets upgraded or as a developer builds a new, um, you know, tears down a bunch of little houses and builds something bigger, then at that point, the city might require, uh, that the street be redeveloped at the, or at least half the street be redeveloped at the, um, developer's expense to include on-street parking spaces. But I think we set that as a goal for the future. Is, is that, is that your understanding, Marcy? That as part, that we say in the comprehensive plan, we would like to add more on-street parking, but we need to do it properly?
Yes, that I, I, that is the path that I see, uh, going forward immediately and then more long-term for you. That makes the most sense right now. But I just didn't want to clarify that we, we have parking. I don't want to, um, hold up Tom for too much longer, but I, I spent a little time putting together some of these earlier slides and talking about on-street parking pockets and things like that. And, uh, we still have that option available. It's just that it has to be behind the property line, you know, instead of in the street, but it's the same idea. And it's a way that we can get, you know, some alternative parking arrangements built into your code right now without having to go through the whole public works, um, path. And, and not, also, I think that's kind of controversial with the community, the on-street parking. So I mean, it might be a smart thing to just, um, skirt that for now. Anyway, I agree, um, Chair Reddick with your, uh, whole, um, that's how I see the path forward. So thank you for summarizing. Over to you, Tom.
Yeah, I have two comments, one procedural, uh, one substantive. First, procedurally, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way this process has gone so far. We haven't taken votes on every individual issue, but, but that would have been impossible because we keep going back, meeting after meeting and revisiting prior issues. And we'd have to be retaking votes. And, you know, my thinking on some things has changed over time. So I'm, I think we have generally found consensus on most issues and come up with this near-final package. And at this point, if anybody has some strong objection to any part of it, they can raise that issue and, and we can discuss it and, and take a formal vote if necessary, if, if the objections are strong enough. Concerning the two that I've heard so far, one is that the minimum lot size and the other is off-street parking. Those are the two issues that people use everywhere to stop more density, more affordable housing. That's what everybody uses in every neighborhood, in every town. We can't allow this type of housing because it's going to be too dense. Why that should bother anyone? Because they're not living there. I don't get, or we're not going to have how, parking everywhere at all times for everybody in unlimited numbers. And people use that all the time to stop things from happening. So I am at this point, um, opposed to kicking parking down the road to some point in the future after a comprehensive plan, which is not going to decept- decide it by any rule, just have general guidelines. I'm not opposed to increasing density to four houses, four dwellings on a 5,000 square foot lot. Assuming somebody wants to live there under those circumstances, great. Fine by me. I don't see a problem with, with any of that. And I don't want to, um, stop this process. And, and for those reasons, I think would it be a complete step backwards if we were trying to make more and more affordable housing in more locations, especially affordable housing and giving people an opportunity at homeownership. Uh, I, I'm, I'm, I discouraged that at this point in the process, we seem to be suddenly wanting to take a step backwards and kick these issues to the future. I mean, if not now, when? I, I thought I heard something about maybe that with the next 20 years, we, as we develop our streets better, then, then we can develop some off-site parking requirements. That's too late. In my mind, that's way too late. The, the time to do things is now. And I don't see that any of these are problems. And so I, I would like to address them now i- if that's still on the table. If, if that's still on the table.
Thanks, Tom. Well, let's talk about parking then, since we're on that topic. Um, and it's and we can kind of like get done and then we can move to the other ones. I'm hearing this is a Bert and John, uh I think, I can't tell who threw their hand up first. How about you go first, Bert?
Yeah, yeah. Before we get into parko spaces, uh, you know, I have done a ton of townhomes that are on the ground floor, five hundred square feet. You know, or six hundred square feet. That's very common. That's actually a fairly large one. And so uh, you know, uh, I, I think if we're gonna get affordable housing, we need to have something other than a twenty-five hundred square foot lot. That doesn't make any sense to me. And the configuration of the lot is subject to the creativity of the developer and the architect, but uh I definitely uh strongly believe that, you know, twelve fifty is a reasonable uh lot size and uh it, it might need to be smaller, as I said.
John.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought we'd already um, I thought twelve hundred and fifty square feet was our go-to position already. Are we revisiting that in a way that we're thinking about changing it? If not, um I, I, I mean, I'm completely in favor of the twelve fifty, so um
I don't know what to do. I didn't know exactly what to do here. Um, we, it's not something we could, even if I, if we could take a vote, we can't vote on this one. It is required.
Well, then I think we should move on. I, I um uh, I, I'm, I, I thought we'd already moved on last week and we're kind of revisiting it again here, but um you know, uh, twelve fifty and more density is where we're going. Um that's sort of been the community attitude, I thought, all the way back two or three years ago, when we started having a few uh, community meetings, you know, everybody. I mean, I know there are people out there that want their big green lawns, but I'm not one of them and I'm not in favor of it. Um parking-wise, we're down to one onsite parking space per unit. Down to five hundred square feet. And if you've got an A D U under five hundred, five hundred or under, no parking is required. Is, is that where we are now?
Yes. Uh, there were some additional provisions put into the parking standards, and if you want, I can pull that page up in the code.
I looked at your parking, I mean, shared driveways and that's, I'm, I'm completely in favor of all that.
Okay. Um, but the, John, there, there are some specific things that D L C D people told us we needed to incorporate, and that has to do with triplexes and quadplexes. There's actually a um requirement that, that reduces the number of parking spaces for those. And so it might be good for me to show you where that is in the track change.
Okay, I'm probably in favor of it, so. Um, I, I will say, I have done hundreds, I've done millions of square feet of buildings. And I can't tell you how many unused parking spaces I've paved over. And, you know, they generate heat, they take away from nature and uh we've gone seventy-five years down that path. And I'm ready to go the other direction for our little town anyway.
So in
I'll get off my soapbox now soon.
The things that I have here in requirements are most, the majority, ninety-five percent of these are things that we have to do. So let me just go through them with you. These are, this is in the requirements for specific uses, ninety-five four, where you, you say how many parking spaces each use needs.
Marcy, could you, could you blow that up so us feeble-minded eyeball people?
Of course, thanks. How about this? Is that good? Does that work or bigger? There. Um, all right. So, yes, in the parking section, parking requirement section of uh ninety-five four, what we, going down from the top, it was uh one space for each dwelling it required, mandatory. No spaces for dwellings under five hundred square feet or A D Us. Um, that is not required, but you opted to do that. So it's here. Um, some of this stuff right here, uh from here to here is new, and that was um for triplexes and quadplexes on parcels of less than three thousand square feet, only one space is required. So you can see that it's a little less than one per dwelling unit. For triplexes and quadplexes on lots greater than three thousand or less than five thousand, two are required. And for triplexes and quadplexes on lots between five and seven thousand square feet, three spaces. For triplexes and quadplexes on lots of parcels greater than seven, four spaces. So only if you have a fourth uh lot that's larger than seven thousand square feet, do you have to provide one space per dwelling unit.
And, and Marcy, this is the state law.
This is the, this is the state requirement, and this was part of um it being this, our code being reviewed by D L C D staff, and this was their requirement. I mean, they reminded me, they reminded me this was a requirement. Any questions about that? Cause I want to go over um a couple of more of these. So from here down, these um, these are these are not have-to-do's, they're uh, but they tie the parking space standards to the design review standards, which are the clear and objective design standards that are in four point one six oh. So there are standards about parking in each of those. Um, off-street shared parking has to, cl- clustered parking has to have certain amount of landscaping in it, and only four spaces can be contiguous. There's some standards in there that would apply to cottage clusters. Parking and also courtyard apartments. Um, parking spaces in garages must be set back from the front facade of the house by at least five feet. So that's a standard in four point one six two I. Um, parking spaces for plex dwellings, which is a um parking, it's a, it limits the driveways to ten feet, says they must be twenty feet long so that you could actually park a car on it and it's not sticking over into the walkway. Um, it also allows these parking pockets that we are just looking at in the photo and that we've talked about before, so that you could park parallel to the street on your own property. That's not currently permitted, but this makes that possible. Um, and then lastly, parking spaces for townhouses must comply with, there's a lot of standards in there, but they're mostly set up to avoid having um parking s- driveways into garages, you know, uh so frequently that you couldn't have planting or a tree or an on-street parking space. So there's a lot of regulation going into parking here. I just want to point that out. It's like, we have, we have made sure that where parking is required, that it's well-designed.
Mar- Marcy, uh, sorry to interrupt, but I, I'm looking at the materials we've been handed, and I don't see four point one six two, one six four, et cetera.
In um, if you use the bookmarks that I put there, it should be, do you want me to go there and?
Well, I'm, I have a paper copy and it jumps from four point one five eight to five point oh one oh.
Um, this is an attachment C.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a whole, uh, Tom, it's a whole new chapter.
Got it.
And the reason I did it that way is so that we don't have to look at pink underline text for every single word. I'm sorry, but it's a little
I found it. Thank you.
Okay. Bert?
Marcy, you emailed that this afternoon, right, or Leila?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't dug it out yet, but.
Yeah, Marcy, I wanted to make sure that tandem parking was allowed in our code, and I didn't see that specifically called out.
We don't say that it's, I will, I, we could specifically call it out, but it's just um, we say that has a minimum length for the driveway is twenty feet. You, if you wanted a tandem um parking arrangement, you could build it longer.
Yeah, I think it'd be wise just to allow that, you know, especially in the multifamily. Uh, that's a very common thing.
Can we define it?
Per, per certain percentage of the parking spaces uh be tandem.
Bert, should we define it? Or Marcy, should we define it?
Uh, I think Marcy can define it for us.
Thirty-five feet for two cars or something like that?
Yeah, whatever is
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah, but uh that'll make uh less paving and more efficient parking, uh especially for multi-unit projects.
Right.
So the last bit of parking that, that I left that page, but the last bit of it was something that um we added in about commercial spaces when they're not being used, commer- I'm sorry, residential spaces in the commercial zone, when they're not being used for short-term rental, that um accessory dwelling units and units under five hundred square feet do not need to provide parking. So that, that just makes them the same as they are in the residential zone, except when they're being used for a short-term rental. Any more questions about um this? Let me navigate out of here for a second. So we talked about parking and the parking pockets and the parking standards. Do people want to actually kind of walk through the parking standards in four point one six oh?
I'm pretty comfortable with them already, but I wouldn't object if since it's a hot topic that everybody comes to understand what they mean.
It was a uh area of focus I thought we should have. Um, so yeah, let me pull them up and we can go through them. Because some of this material is old, but some of it is new. It's one of the most evolving sections. So this is attachment C in the material that you received today, but you've also received this before. If you recall, we had a discussion last time about um some of the language in the intention statement having to do with neighborhood character and all that, and that's been taken out. Um, and then there's an applicability table that tells you what the full set of development of design standards are. And let, sorry, back up a minute. The purpose, the reason we have these is because under the middle housing rule, no housing uh can, no middle housing can be subject to more discretion than just regular, single-family housing anymore. All housing has to be treated the same. So clear and objective standards, we must have them, and they now apply to a one plex, and they apply to plexes and all the other housing types equally. There's no discrimination. Um, so these are, this is the full set. One has to do with articulation and it, and where it applies is listed in this table. Uh, the number of uh windows or eyes on the street uh applies to dwellings that face the street. Um, or dwellings in a cluster facing and shared open space. Uh, there's, the main entrance must be visible from the street, although there are options. It could be a diagonal. It could be setback, and this is applicable to dwellings that face the street um or those in a cluster grouping. Detailed design has to do with uh certain facade features, and there's a menu list. And that applies kind of in the same way that windows and main entrance do to any dwellings facing the street or surrounding a common courtyard. And then we have materials, and this is actually something I would like to talk about because it's new. Um, and then there's a transitional space standard that has to do with separating when there is a ground floor um access to a dwelling and it's close to the back of the sidewalk or close to the street, that there's a vertical or horizontal transition. And there are lots, there are three different menu options here so that you could have something that's completely accessible, or you could have something that's uh separated uh from the ground level, but it's a choice. And then there's pedestrian circulation requirements uh for multi-unit buildings. Off-street shared parking, we just talked about that. Cluttered parking, say for cottage court, cottage cluster. Again, this is the uh, no more than four contiguous spaces. Some landscaping has to be inserted, et cetera. The garage setback, uh, this is our anti-snout house rule. And then the plex onsite parking zone. So that's the full list of standards and the table that tells you where they apply. And then the next section explains you know, if you have an expansion of a building, but not a new building, how much do you, what's the thresholds at which they apply? So that's clearly set out here. Um remodels, and then the standards start on this page. And they go through um in that same order as in the table, articulation. I'm not going to go through each um standard. There's some pictures here. And then we have the windows, then we have the main entrance. And then we have detailed design. This is the menu uh list of architectural features. And as an architect, I can tell you some of these things irritate me, but it's a way for us to have clear and objective standards that apply to all housing. So it's just what we live with anymore regarding residential development. So this section, though, I do want to talk about because it's new. At the last meeting, we talked about that material, materiality, materials, use of materials, and maybe even color are very, very important just to uh Manzanita's character. And so I invited um some feedback on that, and I got this uh from Bert, and I want to make sure that people know about this and can comment on it. And I'm allow you to talk about if you want to, Bert. There was also a color component in this, but I'm um, my kind of recommendation is that unless we can cite specific color, colors, we cannot probably make that clear and objective. Bert?
We can give them the paint colors, as that said. I, I think uh, you know, for me, uh, you know, the, the great aspect of our village is the character of the materials. And the kind of the, you know, be it the kind of uh roots of uh wood construction and cedar exteriors, shingles and siding and stuff like that. And, and predominantly throughout our city, that is the character. Uh, it's, it's diverged quite a bit in uh the uh middle housing three area because it's newer and it doesn't have quite the same context to uh that uh, you know, the city center has. And I think Main Street or Lin- our Main Street, uh, Lenada is a, a good example of a character of materiality that has endured and been very successful. Uh, there, there is a a new building that is kind of looks like it came from Kansas City, a, a big white building that doesn't really fit, you know, in that uh zone. And so uh and what I'm trying to suggest here is that you know, right now, you could, you could uh build a uh highly reflective glass box anywhere in Manzanita. You could build a uh purple and yellow striped house anywhere in Manzanita. And uh people probably won't do that, but they certainly And uh people probably won't do that, but they certainly, it's allowed. And so uh when I look at what uh uh we got with our really excellent, I think, uh, you know, uh affordable middle-income housing project that we approved, uh, you know, those guys took a lot of care and with the materiality and the colors too. It's a very subdued palette that fits our beach town and the forest really nicely. So anyway, what I'm suggesting is that uh for me, actually, color's really important. But uh some guidance on the materiality, I think, is uh uh useful. And then uh I have practiced in many, many communities where the colors are very clearly described uh as terms of the bandwidth that you can use. So I, it, it's for discussion. And uh, you know, I, I, I love Manzanita and the character it is and, you know, kind of the beach colors and you know, a lot of great cedar shingles. And in the case of the Affordable Housing Project, they've used hardy panel shingles, which are very cost-effective. Um, and achieved the same result. So anyway, those are just some thoughts for discussion. I thought it would be worthy of uh uh the community's input and, and the commission's input.
Yeah, thank you, Bert. Um, I see Brad and then John.
Fairly pedestrian comment regarding the materials, but I, I think this list would also benefit by being expanded, just as a, as a simple example. When I look at exterior materials, I don't see any mention of, of vertical um cedar, for example. Is this intended to be an open conversation that will expand over time? Or are we trying to solve this today?
I, I, I was wanting to try to get something going here about material, and I would agree with you. Yeah, you know, like our city hall is vertical cedar side.
I, I just want to make sure because apparently I've made this mistake a few times and I'm not speaking up, but I'm seeing some gaps here and I just want to make sure that um we don't walk away with this is, is a deliberate list and not all-encompassing. Cause I'd get some, a few others on there, which.
This is um, this is one of uh, so to answer your question, it's open, but for a limited time, because we still want to get this to the um, uh, you know, on the adoption schedule by June ninth, I can make some changes over the next week. I think, I can't remember what Leila's what schedule she has me on, but um the adoption package needs to be complete very soon, but it's not too late to add to this list.
I mean, I can't see Marcy the rest of the list, and maybe it's just the roofing and the exterior materials, but it's really.
I and one and two.
You know, if we're going to go this far, do you start regulating windows, fiberglass, color, metal, um? You know, vinyl, I mean, how far do you take this? Um? You know, because it, we're kind of regulating with this. I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm just saying that um, it leaves a lot of things off, including the rest of the envelope.
Well, thinking about what would be reasonable for a home, you know, for a residential context, um, I think that might also say that it can't be really an uh extensive list that you might have for a commercial area in your main village.
No, I, I concur that I think once we start pers- doing a prescriptive path, I think it's leaving some things off and whether again, we solve it today or, or in a week. You know, it, it sounds like there's a rush to get this out the door and completed. I'm just concerned that it's, it might need some refinement. I don't know if this is the time and place actually for all of us to be providing an opinion.
You want?
Marcy, I, I guess one thing would be maybe everybody gives feedback and then it's discussed next week or something like that. Was that useful? Or do you want to try to solve it now or? Cause I agree, like it probably should say sloped roofing, you know, cause there's flat roofs and stuff too.
Next week is the first hearing. Um, I would say get uh get your, so I hear Brad um has some additions. I don't know, Bert, you still have some additions. Maybe, uh, Bert, you, you have some ideas about the specific citations of color that we could add here. But then the goal would be in the next couple of days for me to incorporate those into the hearings um version. Then you can hear from the public about it. Leila.
And I don't want to be a buzzkill here, um, but this would be an item too that if it does require additional discussion, this is not a requirement. And so it could be tabled and adjusted at a later date. So I think I want to make sure we're mindful of that too, while understanding the intent. Um, we actually haven't had substantive conversation about this piece in being so close to our public hearing. Just want to throw that out there as, as an option.
Um, thanks, Leila. So John and then Frank.
Oh, as far as materials go, I, I'm there's two ways to do this uh that don't cause um and create complete headaches. And one is not limit the material, and the other is a list so long that it becomes inconsequential. Um, you know, the cedar shingles, composite shingles, tile, metal roofs, ferroofs. That's ninety percent of them uh for a sloped roof. There's probably other stuff, but you know, I'd be okay there. But as far as exterior ma- materials go, there, there is a lot left out of that. Uh, list that's probably in town right now. There's no stone, there's no tile uh siding. Um. There's no stucco, there's no vertical siding. Uh, limiting the horizontal to five inches to seven inches. I mean, some of the best-designed houses on the planet have four-inch lap siding, but um, and there's a lot of houses in this part of the country that have you know, ten and twelve inches of cedar shingles that, you know, and double-layered shingles. So um, just, I, I would say leave it off completely and um, we've come a long way and we've got a pretty nice little community now um, that doesn't have, you know, we've gotten this far without a list of materials to check off. Um, I understand where Bert's coming from completely. Um, I just don't agree with it. I think the best way to go is to leave it to good designers and um, now, having said that, I know Bert and and probably you, Marcy, and every architect on the planet is rolling their eyes, but um uh, I still think, once you start limiting it, you're gonna get and, and then someone will come along and say, hey, I need an exception to do this, and then they're all gone. So, anyway, my two cents worth again.
Those are good points. Thanks, John. Frank? Oh, you're muted, Frank.
I thought I unmuted it. Sorry about that. I said, I, I, I really believe that we should move on from this. This is opening Pandora's box, and under the time crunch that we have right now, this will be impossible to decipher and come up with any kind of list. Brad's right. Once you open this list, where does it stop? John, I agree with John. A- and you know what? Personally, if somebody wants a purple and yellow striped house in the middle of Manzanita, because they're an artist, that's their business, that's their property. So I would just urge us to just move on from this. Let's get the business at hand taken care of, come back to this in another day. We, we, you know, this is way beyond what we should be doing right now.
Um, Chair Reddick.
In the past, I, I, you know, I was part of the planning commission when we did the design review standards for the commercial zone only. And there was um a discussion about maybe we should make this, you know, the, for the whole city. And the um, the public was not interested in being told what they could do with their own personal property as far as the look and feel. Um, and now we've come a long way since then. You know, we were also not wanting anything but a single-family dwelling on a five thousand square foot lot a- at the time. So, you know, we've come a long way, we've learned. But I, I would hate to limit um creativity and um new, the possibility of new materials or um new standards. So I, I would, I think I agree with Frank. We can just maybe strike this whole section E. Thank you for your hard work on it. Um, to Bert and Marcy, but I, I think it's a much bigger discussion than we can probably solve today. And I do want to make sure that when we have our meeting next week, that what we are presenting and dis- deciding whether we recommend to council or not is a package that won't change from what people have the ability to look at and make comment on. And then goes to the, I, I don't want to be changing anything more next week.
Okay, those, those are good points too. Um, Lee.
Thank you. I find this uh, the concept overly restrictive. And it's kind of reminiscent of creating an HOA with CC and ours for the entire community.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, this is putting me in a pretty difficult situation. I would say that I'm hearing majority of people uh think we should take this out for now. And so that's what I will do. If you're, if you strenuously disagree, let me know now.
So I agree. Let's move on.
Okay, Bert. Thanks. All right, um, let's move on then. Uh, let me so there were other items that uh I wanted to talk about. Um. Does anybody have an issue that they want to cover right now? People want to review the floor area ratio or the um side yard height plane again that we we kind of brought that in at the last meeting. Did somebody raise their hand? Oh, Chair Reddick.
Um, yeah, I, I did. Um, I think we have the definition of, definition of a story.
Yes.
We need to address. Um, otherwise I think I'm in good shape with the materials that we have and are, you know, following our discussion today.
So you want to review the definition of a story together as a group?
Um, we don't have a definition of story, do we? I thought, I thought that was something that we needed.
Sorry.
Maybe you've included one today, but the materials that we got last week.
Make sure, I thought that it was one of the things I did. That was on my to-do list, so um.
And there was just one other thing. I um, that there are still some other parts of the zoning ordinance that use the R two, R three and R four designations.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Probably need to be, you know, some of the exceptions section and maybe some of the short-term rental section. I'm not sure. But they, they use those um designations, so.
Yeah, um, yes, that, that is uh, that's my last step.
Okay, all right, and I'll be quiet. Thank you.
But there is a definition of story now in the material.
Could, could we review that together?
Okay.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
Uh, I was just going to point out, I believe the building code has a definition of a story, but I could be wrong about that.
So this definition is in the very front section amongst all the definitions. This one actually came from the uh Large City Model Code, I think. Here. Tom, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, the definition looks perfectly sensible to me. I I don't understand what the implications of it are. So wh- where, where does this come into play? I'm trying to, trying to see the forest for the trees.
Other people can help me out here, but I think it could come into, one example is it could come into play in the event that you um, do, you're in, you are faced in the future with another affordable housing project that comes in and requests some additional height for a floor. Um, so they, they do what the Pines project did. And they say, I'm an affordable how, I'm put, providing an affordable housing project, and I, I can call upon this um, state provision that allows me to request, you know, a waiver of certain height, things like your height. I'd like to go to thirty-five feet. Um, and I need that because I need my stories to be X number of feet. I don't know. That's one possible citation. Is there another that people know about? So to answer your question, Tom, I'm not exactly sure where this might come into play. But I believe that if it's in the um Large City Model Code, it has probably been put there because it has come into play in the conversations around, in the legis- uh I should say, the zoning kinds of legal conversations around housing.
Can I just jump in and say that we did face that issue um when the Pines, Manzanita Pines first came to us? They requested an additional, I, I think additional one-third of the height of the buildings. And then came back that, when they came back the second time, or when the city reviewed, um. They said that they had the option of either adding a, a third more in height or an additional story. And they, they chose the additional story. And so I think that's why we want to make sure that the definition of story makes sense to everyone.
Okay, so.
That's the only place that I, I know of that that would be an issue, because otherwise we're just, we have a straight height limitation.
That makes sense.
Well, I just did a s- a find search in your document, and I see that it comes up again in signage for businesses, but if they have a second story, they get additional sign. Which I don't have any problems with.
All right, so I'm, I'm gathering that people are okay with the definition of story. And we are coming up on like the next probably fifteen minutes of our work session. Are there, in the interest of having people be comfortable with what is in this package? And um, you've read the memo, so you have an overview of what, what's in the package and what we've what we're moving forward with. Are there areas that people want to see in the actual material while we're together here? Okay, Brad and then Tom. Brad, yours muted.
See, I don't know if this directly answers that, that question, but I am, I am not comfortable with the the designation on the, the lot size and would, and I want to respect the opinions of everyone else. I think good opinions and thoughts were shared, but I, I, I believe and I'm using my background as a filter and development, that there will be unintended consequences that will have an effect on the livability of the community. Um, and the scale and the character of, of, of Manzanita and, and going on record is that I'm, I'm a I would love to see if we could find an exception or a variance or an opt-out, or at least have additional conversation to better understand um either my concerns or, or everyone else's positives on this, but I'm really concerned about the twelve fifty. Um, and its impact to, to the city. And I, and I wanted just one other comment. I don't think as somebody who builds, that I think we're confusing affordability in middle, in middle housing in the context of possibly the AMI, but I don't think there's anything affordable necessarily on a cost per square foot of building an eight hundred square foot home or townhome. using the FAR on a twelve hundred and fifty square foot lot. I, I, I don't think it will have the necessarily the desired outcome that we all think it will as a means to amplify middle housing and opportunities.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Well, I was just going to bring up what Brad just did because I, I, I gathered from even before he spoke that he, he was not happy with, with that one issue. And so I thought we needed to resolve it somehow if if, if only by, by taking a vote on it. But I'm wondering if we have time for that. And also be, before I voted, I would like to hear a better description from him of the unintended consequences. I, I'm that I, I don't have a clear understanding of what that might be, which would inform my decision, my vote, if, if we're going to go to that point.
Yeah, you know, and it's subjective, right, right, Tom? But, you know, I'm using some imagination here that there's, and I'm using a five thousand square foot lot that's maybe got a house on it and trees and it's a single family dwelling and a developer comes in and knocks down an existing home and densifies a lot that otherwise maybe had a fifteen, two thousand square foot lot and tears down all the trees. Number one, changes the environment and character in clear cuts. And all of a sudden puts up four townhomes that are side by side by side. I'm concerned and, and you create a, a, a pattern of this either on a particular block. Say somebody buys two contiguous five thousand square foot lots and before we know it, there's not only eight on there, but there's also ADUs on, on there. And we've increased the, the traffic, the livability, the pedestrian and car traffic along, in a particular neighborhood. That's what I mean by, you know, over densifying or changing the character and the scale of what I think makes these small towns unique. I think we kind of bring a suburban sprawl that we've seen in other coast, in a few other coastal towns up to our, way up to our north and way down to our south. And it all of a sudden changes the uniqueness. But I think, you know, again, whether it's the landscape will, will change, the scale will change, the traffic patterns may change, and I'm speculating, right, that this would happen. I mean, you know, it could, and, and those are my concerns. And I'm going to come full circle. When we talk about middle, in middle housing and affordability, I've crunched numbers on this, both professionally and for this project, because I've got other projects going on similar outside of Manzanita. And the cost per square foot is almost prohibitive, prohibiting some people from, from building or rebuilding. But the cost price point is not what may on this call for middle housing that we would call affordable. I mean, I'm seeing our projects run, you know, at, at, at a sales level at eight, eight hundred to nine hundred a square foot on, you know, an eight hundred foot townhome or condo. And, and there's nothing affordable about that for a lot of people.
Yeah, just to respond, I, there are. I don't do this. This isn't my business. So I don't know anything about affordability other than what I can afford. But, but change is going to happen. And, and I guess in what direction do we want it to go? And I'm in favor of smaller, even if it, I presume would be more affordable than bigger. In, in, or at least there would be more of it. And supply has some effect on affordability and there would be more opportunities for people. And so I, I in favor of increasing housing opportunities of, of all types, not just for people that can afford, you know, a big structure, a big dwelling. And so I, I don't want to squeeze out the opportunity for townhomes.
And to be clear, I'm not suggesting that. I'm, I'm always suggesting, or maybe there's some context, you know, where there's three townhomes on a five thousand square foot lot. Maybe the, you know, again, I, I realize that based on what has been shared with ORS six sixty that, you know, and that this is mandatory that I, I'm asking for some sort of variance or, or, or exception that modifies not doing townhomes. I'm, I'm fine with that as a recommendation or support. I think it's the volume and the quantity on any one block or any one lot, especially when lots become contiguous, that we don't have any safeguards to keep that sprawl and the character of a street from changing. That's my concern. It's not about townhomes per se, just to be clear to, you know, my colleagues on this, on this call. I'm not opposed to that by any means. It's how we do it.
Okay, and, and is the, now it's hard for me to understand what the market will allow, even to the extent our zoning code allows things. I, I see that, you know, even in my own neighborhood here, that the, the zoning has been changed to allow all sorts of things and it's not happening on the ground. You know, the market is such that it's not going to get built, even if we allow for it. But thanks, I appreciate those thoughts. And again, I think you, you feel strongly enough about it that we, we need to come to a resolution that satisfies you, if not what you want, that at least satisfies you that you've been heard and we've made a a, a reasoned decision collectively.
And, and thank you, Tom, for asking the question back and I'll let others speak, but I appreciate the consideration there and I probably didn't articulate fully all the, the points, but in the spirit of time, I know everyone else has their hands up. Thank you.
I see Bert and then John. Bert?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that this is a state law. Is that correct? And that in order to get a variance from it, you'd have to go up to the legislature? Is?
You would have to go through that alternate process that I was describing?
I got it. So that would be probably hundreds of thousands of dollars and kind of messy.
And time.
Yeah, time. So, you know, I, I, once again, I, I, I think the aspect of, of someone clear cutting a lot and building a structure to the maximum development potential is the law now. And on my street, a lot was clear cutted and a huge single family house was built for two people. That's probably a million and a half, two million dollar house. And so that's the law now.
Well, I think we're amplifying it though, Bert, if I can interrupt by doing what we're potentially doing. And I'm still not convinced when I read, I, you need a land use attorney that's more educated than me to read this. But I'm not even interpreting the same twelve fifty, but I'm going to defer to, to Marcy. She's the, the code expert here and has it as, as that opinion, but you know, I, I'm not even sure that I'm coming up with the twelve fifty on here, but sorry to interrupt that, but I wanted to, you know, I think it gets amplified with what we're doing.
It, it adds more people to our community. That's what it does. And it adds people to our community at a lower price point. So a four hundred thousand square foot, four hundred thousand dollar lot that has a single family house on it versus four one hundred thousand dollar lots that has four families on it. So I, I think it's just a, a nature of the goal to provide more housing choices for people. And I think it's an important goal to have more housing choices for people and in my community. You know, I'm, I'm okay with more people. And, you know, that's what it's going to take to keep workers in our community and have starter homes or starter mortgages for people that are close in to Manzanita, otherwise they're going to be out a million miles away. So once again, I support it and I think it's an important part of what we should do.
Thanks, John.
You know, Bert just made my exact point way better than I could have. Thank, thank you, Bert. It's a choice. We still have the option of clear cutting it and building a two million dollar house, just like has been done recently. But Bert's point is let's put four families in there or four, I can't say families anymore, four units in there. Because we do want more, diversity is a horrible word these days, but that's what we want. We want more people. We want, we want younger people because we want people that are trying to buy a house for the first time and want to work here in our community. And pretty much can't do that now. And it's not going to change the, you know, the cost is not going to go down because that never happens, but it's going to be it's more affordable to buy a fourth of a four hundred thousand dollar lot than it is to build one big house. And I think it's more responsible as our community. And I'm in favor of it.
I think that's one of my concerns though. I think, and again, I've done the math on this. It's not one fourth, uh, uh, because we're dividing it four ways. The math does not work out that way. So I'm concerned that we're thinking that this is affordable. I'm concerned that it's, it's not nearly as affordable as people think it's going to be. And I'm building right now and I've not seen it, but I'll, I'll drop that. I, I think we're misusing the term affordability here.
Maybe, maybe the term is more achievable than a single family house in Manzanita.
Less unaffordable.
Yeah, there you go. Less unaffordable. It's always going to be unaffordable, but less unaffordable is our goal.
Okay, I want to pass it over to Chair Reddick and then Frank, you're next.
Yeah, I really appreciate your comments, Brad. Because you're right, there will be unintended consequences, but they may pop up on any number of the changes that we're proposing here. And in fact, they will, something will. And ten years from now, people will go, God, I wish they hadn't done, they wish they hadn't said that because it wasn't a problem until it became a problem. You know, till, till it got overdone. So I, I'm comfortable with what we've done so far. I think Marcy's done an excellent job. I'm a little unsure about how the form base stuff still works, you know, the, the choosing from menus, but I think as long as our planning department can figure out what those standards mean when they're reviewing a building or a development. I, I think we'll, we'll be in good shape. The one other comment that I had was when would one of these projects come back to the planning commission? Or would they not? None of them would because as long as they're following the prescriptions in the form, the building department can say, yes, check, 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 check. No, you can't do that.
Yes.
And it will be done.
That's what will happen. That's the goal.
Okay, so the only thing that we would be doing is land divisions? Is that right? And whatever other commercial stuff comes up? I, I'm, you don't have to answer that. I'm just, I just want to throw that out there that our workload might diminish somewhat.
Or a variance.
Variance, yeah. I don't know that it would diminish necessarily because you don't see ninety percent of the land use applications that come through right now. The staff does, does those.
Okay, I'm not, not, not trying to.
Don't worry. No, we got plenty of work for you.
I'm trying to draw off work and I'm not trying to pass it off.
You have a comp plan and then implementation, so don't worry about it. You're good.
Okay, all right, that's, that's the end of my comment. I'm, I'm happy with, with what we've done.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I agree with Karen. Could you, Marcy, just quickly re-explain the twelve fifty and how we got there and what that's based on? Just so we have a clear understanding. I know you mentioned it earlier. I think it might have gotten past some people.
Yes. I always do a little better with slides, but I'll just explain it. It's a, the minimum lot size comes through the townhouse because you must have townhouses everywhere. This isn't even a want to do, this is a have to do. You have to allow townhouses on any lot that currently allows a single family dwelling today. And townhouses are smaller lots. Then you will have to subdivide to make a townhouse possible and therefore the minimum lot size for townhouses is set. It's ta, tagged to every city's base zone. And it's basically four times the density that you have in your base zone. And then you have a small complication to all that by being kind of a rare city that has not, doesn't just have one dwelling unit, you know, five thousand square foot minimum lot size for each dwelling unit. You have provision in your code already today that says, oh, you can do two units on a lot as long as each one has twenty five hundred square feet. So you have to actually double that to make, to meet the minimum density for a townhouse. That gets us to one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It's all predicated on, it's not just pulled out of thin air. It's just, it's what we're mandated to do and what is predicated on what we're already doing.
Because of townhouses.
Right, thank you.
So I'm not hearing that we want to take a vote. I don't know what I would do if we voted anyway. And I'm also not hearing that people have other issues that they want to review right now. But Leila, can we just talk about what's going to happen over the next couple of days as I'm preparing the final version that goes to the planning commission for the hearing? And if there's a window at all for people to submit, you know, one last question or comment?
So I think based on our discussion today, Marcia, don't anticipate there'll be any additional changes to the proposed language. Is that fair to say? Or were there?
I, I heard that people were comfortable with what we looked at.
Yeah. So I think what I would suggest is, so that's what's posted, that's what's been sent to DLCD. That's what's out there for the public to review for the June ninth hearing. Questions are always welcome. I think I would prefer those come to me and then I will work with Marcy if needed to get any additional answers for all of you. So feel free to shoot staff a question if you have it between now and the hearing. If there isn't any objections to the proposed language beyond what we've already talked about, then my suggestion would be that if there are amendments that need to be made, that we do those in the hearing itself. So that that's done and debated publicly. And the majority of that hearing next week will be taking public comment. And sometimes as a result of that public comment, you may have an adjustment to sort of the non mandatory side of the equation. I will note that you also have a land use application as well. This is just a subdivision, so it shouldn't take too long, but that's, that's what I would propose have happen.
And this is the overall schedule for the adoption ready package, right?
That's right, yes. So today we're doing our work session. You'll hold your public hearing. Ideally come out of that with a recommendation at the end of that hearing next week. And then we will move to, we'll have a work session with city council, pretty much to review what we've done today and then anything that may come out of the meeting next Monday. And then we have a tentative first reading of that for July ninth and we'll just have to see where the city council who hasn't had as much exposure to this, but has had plenty, we'll have to defer to them on the next step. So we anticipate a July nine first reading that could possibly be moved to August sixth if they would like to have another work session. So we wanted to build in some flexibility there. I will note that July one, the staff will start using the model code for homes that come in, in the interim.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your time, everybody. And I'll see you at the next Monday at the hearing.
Um, yeah, so we will um, I, I, I think probably the best thing to do would be to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leila, that, that we should finish this business first because hopefully um, we'll be able to review any changes that you make based on today's discussion. And then send it, uh, have a vote to recommend or not. And then do the um, land use division hearing after that. So you can
You wanna swap it? Okay, that's fine.
You can have dinner, normal hour. Um, it, does that make sense?
Yeah, so what you're saying is do the public hearing and the housing ordinance amendment decision next week.
Right.
First and then move to the
Then do the land division.
Yeah, and I would suggest to, Marcy and I talked about this, but I wanna make sure it's out in the, the ether here too, is the, the land division, we got quite a bit of comments from DLCD as well. And so I think you can open the public hearing on that, but then continue it to a later date so that we can work through um, some of those changes. And since that's not as urgent as the housing work, um, that was, that was what staff was proposing. Um, so if there's support from the commission on that, that would be our recommendation. So you can at least have another opportunity to um talk further about that or have us explain those changes in more depth.
Okay.
Just like a lot to squish in after we got those changes from uh, DLCD. So I didn't make that unilaterally. I wanna make sure everyone's on board with that and that you're comfortable with that approach.
Okay, and we'll um, so plan on a little bit longer meeting next time. Come fortified, bring snacks. Um, okay, that, that all sounds good to me. And are there any other updates? Anything coming in July that um, Scott is aware of?
I don't think so, Scott. Is there? He's frozen. Now he's moving or is pretending to be frozen.
I'm, I'm mute. Um, I have nothing right now for July, no applications, so.
Okay, so if we needed to move, uh, postpone or keep the hearing open, we could
Yes.
We could move it to the July.
Yeah, and we can talk further, but if for some reason the housing needs to carry over, I would, I would suggest maybe we do that quite a bit sooner.
Okay.
Perhaps the same week, but we'll, we'll talk further with you about that, Chair, when we prep you later this week.
Sounds good.
That would be my hope that we can do that sooner than later.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody for your attention to this. It's been a lot to absorb. Um, and I, I, I hope that, that even though we're not all happy about every piece of it, that we'll be able to support it um with the public next, next week. I hope, I hope we'll be able to make it work. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Marcy. Good work.
We'll
To Marcy.
You all next week, same time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.